Good morning. Today is April 29, 2025. This is the regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley is absent. Doug Verboon.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Robert Thayer.
Here. Okay, four members present, one absent. At this time, would you all please rise for invocation from Pastor Horace Whitley, Mount Olive Baptist Church. Be more. Morning, Horace. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. God in heaven. We begin by giving you thanks for your blessings of the past and your blessings for the future. But give us of our transgressions and guide us by your word, the eternal truth, day by day. May your presence be with us as the Kings County Board of Supervisors conducts its business. We pray for our Kings County community and all of its officials we who we serve. We pray for those in our community, those who have and those who have not. Enable our leaders to resolve the issues where we work, live, play, and play. Remind them of their responsibility to serve the common good of all. Give them the patience to listen receptively and be guided by righteousness, wisdom, and justice when making their decisions. Empower them with your spirit to respond in unity to the needs of the community from your point of view, not only in their hearts and minds, but in their words and actions. In the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Please follow me if you salute our next flag. Ready, blue. Okay, we'll move on to unscheduled appearances. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on any items of interest within the board jurisdiction and which are not likely on the agenda. The board will not answer any questions impromptu, and concerns or complaints will be referred to the appropriate staff. For items which are on the agenda, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the board as each item is brought up for discussion. Speakers should limit their comments to no more, not more than two minutes. Do we have any written?
I have no written correspondence, but our first speaker is Rebecca Bell.
Morning, Rebecca. How are you today?
Hi, I'm advocate for mental health. Mental health matters. There's still a stigma, no matter what we do. But unfortunately, it probably takes a celebrity to kind of rush away the darkness. But I came across a song by Papa Roach called Leave a Light On, and tear, tear buckets, honestly. It's Talk Away the Dark Foundation Suicide Prevention. So my dream is to maybe have like an event at Kings County Fair, trying to reach out to the people that are in charge of the Kings Fairgrounds to put some sort of event. But I want to give kudos to behavioral health. I was able to have a friend. She was going in crisis, and I was able to talk her into going in, and I want to say kudos to the people for handling it very well. So and I just noticed that lately I wish they had these options during school. Because mental health is more addressed to younger and younger generations. They might have to start as early as fourth, fifth, sixth grade. I hate to say this, but yeah, it's very vulnerable moment for those kids. They're doing it for junior high and high school, but they might want to start going down to elementary school in that prospect. So maybe after school program, something where it's not putting a light on for that. I mean, like shining it because that would just scare people away. But I just wish that Kings County was a little bit more of an advocate on the board for mental health advocates, advocacy's, attending meetings or something like that to where maybe people will come forth a little bit more. So just, who knows?
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Lisa Lewis.
Morning, Dr. Lewis. How are you today?
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Lisa Lewis, Kings County Behavioral Health. Good morning. I'm here with Kristi Lepke, who is our Assistant Director, and we're very happy to introduce our two new Deputy Directors. This has taken us a long time, and we are there. And so I wanted to introduce our first Deputy Director, Polo Ortiz. Polo is our Deputy Director of Clinical Services. I met Polo actually in graduate school, like over 20 years ago. We were in the same class at Fresno State. Polo has worked for Kings County Behavioral Health since September of 2022 as our Adult System of Care Manager. Before that, he held several positions within the behavioral health field. He was the Program Director for eight years for Sequoia Youth Services Exeter, an Assistant Program Director in Visalia Youth Services in Visalia for two years. Concurrently, he was also serving as adjunct faculty for CSU Fresno. He was a Program Supervisor, then Program Administrator at Family First in Fresno for the span of two years, and has been a direct service provider for various, in various capacities since 1999. He holds a master's and bachelor's degree from C- CSU Fresno and an associate's degree from Porterville College. And Polo transitioned from being a probation officer to being a therapist, and that's the time that I knew him. And we were both making transition, me from raising babies and him from probation. So welcome, Polo. We're so happy to have him.
Welcome, Polo. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. I'm just looking forward to serving the community and continue to help the department.
Welcome.
And I'd like to introduce Kristi Lepke. Is that okay for, to introduce our next Deputy Director?
Morning, Kristi.
I'm Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors. I'd like to introduce Brett Wolman. He too is a clinician, and he's been a direct service provider in various capacities since 2016. He has held several positions when, within the behavioral health field, of which most recently he has served with Kingsview on their Mobile Crisis Program in Tulare County, and with the Sparanet as the Program Manager of their Children's Mobile Crisis Support Team here in Kings County, as well as the Family Urgent Response Response System with HSA here in Kings County. He has also served on several boards, including Vice Chair of the Board at the Source and Vice Chair of the Tulare County Mental Health Board, and he is a veteran of the U.S. Armed Services. It's the Marines, so I won't hold that against them. Go Army. He has a master's and a bachelor's degree from Branman University and associate's degree from San Joaquin Valley College, and I'd love to welcome him to our, our team.
Welcome. Would you like to say a few words?
Just a thank you for having us come out here, and I get to see a little bit of what you all do, and I've been in Kings County before, but I'm happy to be back working with the county.
Very good. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
It's all the speaker cards that I'm aware of, and it doesn't appear anyone online. Has their hand raised?
Is anybody else in the audience that would like to say anything at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is approval of the minutes. Item 3A, Report Out of Close Session from Regular Meeting, April 22, 2015, 2025. Sorry.
There's nothing to report, Chair.
Okay, move on to next item B, Approval of the Minutes from Regular Meeting, April 22, 2025. Moved by Supervisor Robinson. Second by Supervisor Nevs. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Okay, item passes, four in favor, one absent. We'll go on now to the consent counter. All items listed on the consent counter are continued to be routine and will be acted by one motion. If a board member has a question or requests additional information or wishes to comment on an item, the vote should be taken, not taken until after the question has been addressed or comments have been made. And the public has a chance, had an opportunity to commit, uh, comment on the consent counter at this time. What's your board's pleasure? So, but wait, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna pull item C4. And then we have a motion to approve the counter as presented, as mentioned. Motion by Supervisor Thayer, second by Supervisor Robinson. Any questions from the, from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Was this the, the bill 470, was that the one about the AT&amp;T?
Yes.
Okay. So consider authorizing. So are you guys still?
We're gonna vote on it separately.
Okay, okay, cool. All right, thank you.
Or pull it. We might just let it go for a couple of weeks. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Four in favor, one absent. And item C4, we're just gonna pull it, right? And this, we're gonna.
We're pulling for discussion.
Okay, we're gonna, okay, we're on item C4. Alex?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Alex C. Walker, Administration, Administrative Analyst for Kings County Administration. Before you this morning is a letter of opposition for Assembly Bill 470, known as AB470, which would facilitate the relief of telecommunication providers of their carrier of last resort obligations. On April 8, the board directed staff to send a letter of opposition for AB470 as amended of March 15 to AT&amp;T California, and to bring back an item to the board with an update regarding amendments to the bill and more information. Staff have since received updates from the county state lobbyists and regarding deadlines for position letters and where this bill is in the legislative process. AB470 was amended in the California State Assembly on April 22, 2025, and is scheduled for a hearing and Assembly Communications and Convoyance Committee tomorrow, April 30, 2025. Reviewing the amendments to the bill, the concerns that were shared at the April 8 meeting persist. And furthermore, the amended bill is arguably worse than the previous draft for the following reasons. First, the core issue of AB470 and why the amended bill is problematic to Kings County residents is that caller protections would be eroded. Caller provides county residents with a guaranteed other be affordable, reliable, and quality service available to keep them connected, both in their private daily lives and in emergency situations. Caller is the last resort if no carrier is willing or able to offer service. The legal obligation placed on a caller provider has been a tenant of universal service for decades to ensure that everyone has a guarantee to access safe, reliable, and affordable telephone service. If AB470 passes as amended, county residents will lose a legal protection that has provided them affordable, accessible, and reliable voice services such as 911 for decades. From this perspective, the core function of AB470 would disadvantage Kings County residents. Second, Kings could see caller protections dropped, which would be a disservice to county residents. As amended April 22, the proposed bill would provide procedures for carriers to terminate caller obligations in areas, one, where the United States Census Bureau reports no population, two, in areas where telephone corporations provide no basic exchange service to any customer within their service territory, and three, in areas that are quote unquote "well-served." Well-served as defined in the bill means at least three different facility-based service providers offer alternative voice service in the relevant area, and at least one of those providers is a wireline provider, and at least one of those service providers offers competitively priced alternative voice service. The definition continues, adding that alternative voice service shall be available for at least 99.9% of broadband serviceable locations in the area set forth in the most recently publicly available Federal Communications Commission National Broadband Map showing fixed wireless broadband coverage. A map of Kings County areas from the Federal Communications Commission National Broadband Map is attached in the agenda packet. It is accessible online at the link provided as well. According to the FCC map attached, most of Kings County has 100% coverage represented by the blue hexagons, and thus will be eligible to have its caller obligations relieved under AB470 as amended. However, it is important to note that these maps are known to be inaccurate and do not truly reflect the actual experience of residents. For example, an area of the map may show 100% coverage, yet the residents, businesses, or other location occupants may experience connectivity issues. At their April 8 meeting, it was shared that in 2023, AT&amp;T California, who is Kings County's caller provider, attempted to relieve its caller responsibilities through the CPUC proceeding A23-03003. Under that request, the following Kings County localities would have been impacted. Armona Community, oh, sorry, Armona Census Defined Place, the City of Avonale and surrounding areas, Grangefield Census Defined Place, the City of Hanford and surrounding areas, Hadwick, Home Garden, Kettleman City, Lemoore Station, the City of Lemoore, Stratford, and parts of Central Track 93212, which nears the City of Corcoran. A map of caller carriers is attached in the agenda item as well, and an online version of the map outline in the above referenced locations may be accessed with the attached link. As illustrated by the attached maps, there is an overlap between Kings County territories with 100% broadband coverage in areas that caller obligations were previously slated to be removed, indicating that Kings County may see caller protections dropped under provisions of the amended bill. There is a clear overlap between Kings County territories, areas with broadband coverage per the map amended bills specifically calls out, as well as the AB point, ah, sorry, the AB470 points can cause attention to in addition to the 2023 application to drop caller obligations. And third and finally, a lack of redress. The amended bill creates intentional design bureaucratic process that appears to provide recourse and challenges for residents, but in practice would be burdensome, confusing, and limited. The agenda packet provided a simplification of the process, but for the board and public's understanding, in short, the process is a notification of the soup process designed by carriers backing the bill. AB470 will allow caller providers to shed its obligations without accountability or truly independent review. The bill calls for a third party that is selected by and paid for by the carriers themselves, calling into question independent decision-making. This process has been flagged by several advocacy groups, such as the Rural County Representatives of California, as problematic, especially for consumers. Concerns have been raised over AB470's lack of redress protections for residents. One such concern had been made by a member of the public who wrote the board recently, encouraging the board to urge its, its state representatives to oppose the bills such as AB470. This letter is included in the CAO's Board Correspondence Report for this board meeting. Basic services include lifeline rates for eligible consumers, free access to 911, telephone relay service, directory and operator service, and other common services. There are key benefits to maintaining caller protections that the residents of Kings County and other rural California communities rely on. These benefits include ensuring every customer, regardless of location, has access to essential voice services, prevents service area gaps, and ensures that maintaining infrastructure and existing infrastructure is not abandoned and is continually maintained, especially in emergency situations, and further maintaining critical communication services during emergencies, natural disasters, or power outages. Caller protections ultimately provide county residents with a guarantee that there will be affordable, reliable, and quality service available to keep them connected, and that if AB470 were to pass, it would permit and facilitate the exit and potential abandonment of Kings County and other caller areas. The CPUC has asserted that caller rules are technology neutral, and thus inferring that existing carriers of last resort may meet their obligations through any technology. This means that nothing in existing law or existing caller protections prevents carriers from modernizing their lines, equipment, or other facets of, of service delivery. Caller is not required to maintain copper networks specifically as claimed by supporters, rather that happens to be the current technology in the moment. It is important to note that modernization can occur while protecting caller and preserving its important role in ensuring basic essential service delivery. They are not mutually exclusive under the current law. This point further affirms that the core of the bill is dropping caller legal protections. In short, the amended bill does not address the core concerns raised of losing caller protections. For similar reasons, AB470 as amended April 22 is opposed by the Rural County Representatives of California, the California State Association of Counties, with oppo- opposition letters having been sent by the county of Butte, Fresno, Humboldt, Inyo, Kern, Medicino, Monterey, Napa, Nevada, Santa Clara, Santa Cruz, Siski, Solono, Sonoma, Yola, Yuboe, in addition to the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors, the Shasta County Board of Supervisors, the cities of Calabasas, Agora Hills, and Hidden Hills, with many more groups in opposition. To be fair, a number of letters of support have been filed for AB470. However, none on record are from local government entities such as counties and cities. If your board passes this item, the county state lobbyists will support the county in sharing this letter. At this time, we respectfully ask your board to authorize the chairman to send a letter of opposition against AB470 as it relates to relieving carrier of resort obligations. Staff and I are available for any questions you may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions in the board? Any comments? I would comment. So I agree with everything. I mean, we have to make sure everybody has access to communication, but at the state level, here we are, and I've, I've experienced this on my property where you got someone that's out there in the middle of the night, stealing your copper wire, and then now you're the end user, and you can't get any support from your law enforcement because we got the state of California going against the president's or going against Prop 36, not prosecuting people that are taking the copper wire. And now you're forcing a business owner to cover all the losses from the problem of the state, which is the people out there at night taking all the copper wire. So that's my issue with it. I can go and support the opposition letter. I understand it. But it makes it difficult when there's only one carrier of last resort in existence today, so there's no competition, and no one wants to put the infrastructure in to go out to the last house and the last road. So I know for my property, I've, I went all wireless because I couldn't be consistent in my alarm systems with copper because its depth is so bad. And the, and the repairmen that were coming to do a replacement and working on it were always switching the lines, so it's inconsistent. So and it was actually half the price when I went to air signal versus a copper line. So those are my concerns. It's just sharing. I mean, I understand how important it is.
Yeah, I mean, I, I echo some of that. I, my concerns are just, you know, the, the consumer protection that we as a board have for those that live in Kings County or travel through Kings County that, that need access to emergency services. And Sheriff, has anything changed at Cal State Sheriff's on? I'm assuming they're still opposing this as well.
Yeah, thanks, Super Sir. Nothing's changed yet. We're still in opposition to this.
Hey, yes, I mean, I, I mean, I don't know if we want to sign it today or wait and see what happens.
We gave them, we gave them two weeks, and so they could have came here and talked to us.
Well, and that's the other thing, and it's, and, and I got thick scans. I mean, I got an email from somebody, a vice president from AT&amp;T, and I, I just, it was a tactical move on two things. One, I appreciated the email, but two, I had a question, and I asked a question just for, because one, I wanted an answer, and two, I wanted to see if anybody would respond back to me, and then they didn't. So it was just, you know, somebody shot an email to a board member and, and really gave two, two cares less about whether the board member was going to respond back. So it kind of, to me, it put me in a position where, you know, as an elected official, if, if AT&amp;T, and that just happens to be who the carrier of last resort, or the resort is here, is gonna not respond back to me, then what are they gonna do to the person who lives out in Stratford, Kettleman City, or out in Avonale, or up here in the, the Riverbend area that, that has an issue? So I'm, I'm good with sending it along if, if, well, I'd make that motion to, to sign it as opposed to.
We have a motion to oppose. Second, second. Any questions in the audience? Nothing? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Four in favor, one absent. Thank you very much, Alex. Okay, we'll move on now to regular counters, and we have item A, Assessor Clerk Recorder, Kristi Lee. Morning, Kristi.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Kristi Lee, Assessor Clerk Recorder. Today I'm here to talk to you about my salary, which is always a kind of uncomfortable thing to talk about, but we're gonna, we're here and we're gonna go forward. So in January of 2015, I was sworn into my first term as the Kings County Assessor Clerk Recorder. Since that time, I have never received a merit increase in pay. Your board has the responsibility to set the compensation in open session. So your board has salary-setting authority for all county employees, including elected officials. The salary resolution calls for the Assessor Clerk Recorder to be paid based on salary band two. Since taking, first taking office, I have not received a merit increase and am just highly over the bottom of salary band two, resulting in one of the lowest department head salaries in Kings County. When I began in Kings County in January of 2015, I was the fifth highest paid department head. Although I am now the longest standing of the 22 department heads other than the sheriff, my pay is 16th in ranking. That means 11 additional department heads have moved ahead of me in salary, even though they have not served in their positions as long. During the last 10 years within salary band two, the sheriff's salary has increased by 19.3% after removing the cost of living increases, as has the Board of Supervisors' salary. The Coffin Associates study did not accurately evaluate certain salaries, including those of elected officials. They only considered the top of the band without gauging where each salary was placed within that band. There was no consideration given to the actual titles of comparable positions from other counties, nor the length of service. In the study results, KNA referred to the salary comparison as top step, yet in my case, there is no stepping or movement in that range. In addition, many of the elected officials from other organizations were new to their positions, and experience does add value. When employees, whether at the entry level, management level, or even assistant department heads begin with Kings County, they are normally put into step one of a salary range and move up to step five, which is a 20% increase within the first three and a half years, without any actual promotion or changes in job duties. In addition, management level employees and appointed department heads now receive 80 hours of management leave time, which may be cashed out at the end of each fiscal year. Elected officials do not receive management leave allocations. This amount alone would add over $6,000 per year to the current salary of the Assessor Clerk Recorder position if allowed. I'm now in the middle of my third term and have completed 10 years of service to the citizens of Kings County. Since taking office, significant improvements have been made. The backlogs and stagnation that were experienced prior to me taking office have been eliminated, creating office efficiencies that allow for consist, a consistent stream of current property tax revenue available to your board via the general fund. I have taken a dynamic leadership style to ensure the office is made better each and every year. All technological systems within the Assessor and Clerk Recorder divisions have been updated and replaced to increase efficiency and provide more public access. This includes a new property valuation system, a new property transfer system, a new recording system, and the ability to electronically record and file documents. Just as a few of the highlighted areas. There have been physical improvements to the office to better facilitate staff and the public, including reconfiguring cubicles, new carpet, stand-up desks, and employee break room, child's play area in the public viewing room, a modernized wedding ceremony room, and an updated lobby and conference room. All documents have been scanned, and we have a work-from-home program available to employees one day per week, along with the 980 program that was initiated back in 2016. Even with inflation and increases in salaries and expenses, the department's spending has remained stable over the last 10 years. Almost all Assessor staff are certified by the state of California, which provides a higher standard than many other counties require. A low-value ordinance was initiated, along with updating the disaster ordinance and being responsive during the flood of 2023. Laws, rules, and regulations have changed over the past 10 years, and all changes have been implemented. The county role provides funding for most other departments, schools, and special districts. The net role has increased 72% over the last 10 years, 72%. From $9.1 billion to $15.7 billion, adding millions in revenue to the general fund each year, with over $13.8 million more to the general fund in 2024 compared to 2014. Yet the Assessor and Clerk Recorder offices have maintained staffing levels and only added two office assistant positions to offset the additional workload. These results do not happen without a lot of hard work. I'm available 24/7 and often receive phone calls at night, on the weekends, or even when I'm homesick. This is part of the job and is welcomed, but it does require a lot of time. I'm proud to be the 10th Assessor in the history of Kings County and the only female that has served in this role. I have been active in the California Assessors Association and served for numerous years on the Executive Board of Directors for that organization. Other roles include Treasurer for five years and CAA President for 2020, in 2023, along with serving on numerous committees. The most recent data from Transparent California is from 2023 and shows county assessors in the surrounding counties, including Kern, Tulare, Fresno, Merced, Madera, and San Luis Obispo, and other counties that have been reviewed in the past as comparable, including Calaveras, Trinity, and Nevada, all receive higher pay in 2023. all receive higher pay in two thousand twenty-three than I currently receive in two thousand twenty-five and average eighteen point nine percent more. Merced County Assessor Clerk Recorder receives fifty percent more in pay than I do. Consequently, I would like to propose the following options for your board's consideration. Number one, twenty percent increase, which aligns closely with the increase given to most county employees when on the job for three and a half years. Eighteen point nine percent increase as option two, which is the average of the pay of the other California county assessors and aligns closely with the sheriff's increase over the past ten years and the Board of Supervisors increase. Or a sixteen percent increase is option three, which although I don't think it's as fair, I do want to recognize that the board has been working to make sure that there are accurate and fair salaries across the whole county. So a sixteen percent increase as a compromise, considering recent proposed cost of living increases that have been given countywide. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Before we go to any questions, I'm going to recuse myself due to circumstances beyond my control, turn my meeting over to Vice Chair. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I too am going to add that recuse myself.
Okay. Allison, is that allowed?
Yeah, so what we're going to have to do, I'll wait till Supervisor Nevs leaves the room. So since there are only two voting members remaining, we need at least a quorum. So we're going to have to invoke the rule of necessity. So if you give me a minute, I will be back with at least one of them.
We'll just take a moment, Susan.
Of money Supervisor Nevs is back.
Welcome back, Supervisor Nevs.
All right. So at this time, are there any questions from supervisors?
I I mean, I I have some questions. I don't know if you wanted to open it to the public first or to, does it matter which order that goes?
No, it doesn't matter. You can open it to the public.
Whatever questions you have.
Or, yeah, it's the chair's decision, vice chair's decision.
Okay. So in my sense, then, I under if I understand this correctly, since you've been employed with the county, you know, you got sworn in, you you have zero sick time accrual in any in any bank, side bank, is that correct?
Correct.
Any vacation time accrual in a bank, is that correct? There's none of that either, right?
That's correct.
And then just, I mean, just kind of to, I don't know if it's to entertain the audience and anybody listening online, but what's your, what is the constitutional obligation you have as the office holder? Like, how many days do you have to work every year?
One day a year.
One day a year. Obviously, as elected, we don't do that, right?
Correct.
So when you gave the the piece about the the cash out, that management leave cash out, what what's that up to now for department head? Is it sixty-four hours or is it one hundred hours? I don't, and maybe it's a question more for Carolyn. I don't know.
As of January first, it's eighty hours.
So eighty. So eighty hours. And so every department head, then, I mean, I'm just looking at it in this sense, that every department head that that you're amongst of, of course, they're not elected, but they they accrue sick leave balance, correct?
Correct.
They accrue vacation balance and then every year they can cash out whatever their hourly rate is up to. Can they cash out the full eighty hours?
I'm not sure on that, Carolyn, on the department heads of it.
Yes, I can clarify.
Carolyn, can you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, Carolyn Lee, Human Resources Director. For the management vacation, it's currently right now sixty-four hours and forty-eight can be cashed out. July one, it will increase to eighty and eighty can be cashed out.
And then do we, and then do you have a ballpark figure of how long that that benefit has been in place for department heads?
So I've been here twenty-three years and it's, we've always had a management vacation benefit. It has increased over the years. But it's been consistent since I've been here.
And then I guess I just would suggest then that that, I mean, there's, I know when I retired in November, there was a significant payout of all of this unused time that I had. And that I personally, I think, because of my time with the county, fifty percent of my unused sick time went into a bank somewhere for future healthcare. Do you have that benefit as an elected official at this time?
I I believe there is some sort of sick leave benefit. I'm I'm sorry, I'm not too well versed on the sick leave or vacation.
Very little experience with that piece of it. That's usually handled through the finance department. And there is some type of a retiree health benefit that occurs at the end of their at the end of an elected official's time. They calculate it based on their service hours and stuff like that, and it goes into a bank that goes to the retiree health, but they have to retire from the county in order to access that benefit.
Okay. I don't know, I see Sheriff standing here.
Sheriff, if you want to add something.
Probably in tune to it.
Sorry to butt in. Sheriff Robinson. So as somebody who's getting close to that point here in the next six or seven months, I've been working with county finance on that piece of the puzzle. And so we i- in in my first term as sheriff, there was a different elected official benefit that was a cash equivalent benefit. And then after Pepper came in, county council applied that we had to be the equivalent of others within the county system. And so what they did was is we do accrue sick time, but we don't burn sick times. We accrue sick time on an annual basis that then is calculated into a formula that if we want to roll that into the health insurance bank upon retirement. And so there is a formula that finance has that they can calculate for the elected officials to know where that benefit goes. Just a little bit to your point, I was going to come up and speak when you opened public comment, but to your point is, you know, so I I'm in my fifteenth year and, you know, obviously for fifteen years, I haven't had the benefit of cashing out a vacation cash out. I get the email every year. And that's the to the extent that it goes. And so, you know, I spoke before your board about five years ago, and of course, the two of you weren't part of that board meeting as as board members. And I did get a significant bump at that time, but I hadn't spoken before the board ever, and I've only done it one time on my salary per se as a separate agenda item. I have been included in other agenda items, but as a standalone agenda item, I've done it one time in fourteen plus years. And obviously, because it does draw, you know, attention and you're an elected official and you want to make sure that you have a smart approach to what it is you're requesting. And just for this board and for the record, when I did come to the Board of Supervisors, the board on a five oh vote voted for me to be moved to the top of the salary band about five years ago. And I have received certain increases that were lumped in with all the department heads over the course of my fifteen years, whether it be a COLA or longevity, et cetera. And so there was some some bump in pay. And, you know, I'll I'll use a little bit of an example that Carrie gave yesterday on her presentation to department heads. There are some one-offs in the Coffin Associates study that just didn't make any sense. And quite frankly, this is one of them. You know, I personally was compared to, I think, eleven other chiefs and sheriffs. And I was, I was put in a place where I was told that I was two percent above where I should be paid. But if you were to look at that list of chiefs and sheriffs that I was compared to, all of them had like less than five years' experience, most had less than two years' experience, but yet I was lumped in and said, oh, well, you make too much money, so we're not going to do any salary adjustment for your Coffin Associates study. And so there are some one-offs in the Coffin Associates study and for the elected officials like the two of us that have been around a long time, that's absolutely what it is. And so, you know, I'll just, you know, I'll take a page out of the state legislature. I stand in support of the Assessor and her efforts today. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff. So I I guess, I mean, from my standpoint, just a period of discussion that that there's, there is a, there is a void that our Assessor has been missing literally since she's been elected and it's and it's a void that other department heads and other county managers get to appreciate where you can look where where they can cash in this this unused annual management pay and there's a value to it. I think you put it at about six thousand dollars. And, you know, in addition to the 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 vacation accrual that you don't get, that we don't cash out, I mean, we can't, we're not cashing that out as as managers. But but when you retire, you get to cash it out. And there's, there's a, there's a rainbow at the end of that journey, you know, if 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 managers that work in the county, you know, don't take vacation and and are committed. So with that, that's the only questions or the comments that I have, Mr. Chair.
Do I have any other questions or comments? No. I I have a couple of questions. For starters, when you first started, elections was part of your purvey, right? Part of your scope of work?
Correct.
What, did you get a reduction in pay when when you vacated that the elections portion of work?
No, I actually got paid out for not getting paid to do elections. So there was a settlement for that.
I see. And then also, you know, I understand a couple percent Sheriff was talking about with COFF. But in this particular case, COFF actually suggested by quite a bit the percent with that there was an overpayment of quite a quite a percentage. Is that accurate?
No, it's not accurate.
What is accurate?
Well, the information that I gave you in the agenda item, that actually compares the other counties. Some of those counties are only assessors, not clerk recorders as well. None of them have elections. But in those comparisons, there is a law in the government code, and I have that with me that says that when you combine departments, you have to compensate for combining departments. The county can't just you know, combine different responsibilities and duties without having a compensation for that. But regardless, even with assessors that don't hold the clerk recorder position, they're still paid on average eighteen point nine percent more than me, and all of them are paid more than me.
Do we have any questions from the public at this time? Are there any questions online? All right. Do I, do I have a direction on the board?
Well, if if somebody wants to second this, my motion would be number one, the the twenty percent increase, which aligns closely given to most county employees over this the past three and a half years. That'd be my motion.
All right. So we have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
All right. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
No.
Rusty Robinson.
No.
Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Look to counsel. The motion failed.
All right. Madam Counsel, can we call back Chairman?
Yes, we can. I'll go get them.
Thank you. That's my guess.
It, sorry about that. We'll move on now to the next item, which will be Behavioral Health Department.
Morning, Chairman. Members of the board, Christie Lucky, Assistant Director at Kings County Behavioral Health, I'd like to introduce Brenda Tamea Pagan, who is our Mental Health Services Act Manager, and she'll be presenting the proclamation request for May Mental Health Awareness Month, and she's here with her Mental Health Services Act team.
Thank you, Christie. Good morning, Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Brenda Tamea Pagan, Program Manager for Mental Health Services Act Unit at Kings County Behavioral Health. I'm joined today by key members of the Mental Health Services Act Team, Desiree Low, Outreach Specialist, Antonio Lopez, and Liliana Robles, Program Coordinators, and then Anna Gaxiola, our Office Assistant, who are integral to our community engagement and program implementation. We're also pleased to have Zarina Martinez, Nursing Division Manager from the Department of Public Health, presenting with us this morning. So May is nationally recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month and Maternal Mental Health Awareness Month. These observances present an important opportunity to raise awareness, reduce stigma, and promote access to mental health resources in our community. Our goal is to encourage early intervention, support wellness, and ensure that all residents feel empowered to seek help when needed. To promote Mental Health Awareness Month, we'll be distributing green ribbons, the international symbol of mental health awareness, signifying strength, recovery, and hope, and also other mental health awareness items. At this time, I'd like to invite Zarina Martinez to share more about the significance of Maternal Mental Health Month.
Good morning.
Thank you, Brenda. May is also Maternal Mental Health Month, an observance promoted in partnership with the California Department of Public Health. Maternal mental health is a vital, yet often overlooked, component of prenatal and postpartum care. Nationally, at least one in eight women experience symptoms of postpartum depression after childbirth. And one in three pregnant women report significant anxiety or depression during or after pregnancy. If left untreated, these conditions can have serious impacts on both the mother's well-being and the healthy development of her child and family. Raising awareness and reducing barriers to care are essential steps towards healthier families and communities. Now I'll turn it over to Desiree Low, who will highlight some of our local activities planned for this month.
Morning, Desiree.
Morning. Thank you, Serena. Kings County Behavioral Health and the Department of Public Health are collaborating in several community activities this May to Elevate Mental Health Awareness Month. Social media campaigns will be ran along with King's Partnership for Prevention and KCao sharing wellness tips and resources. Community outreach at Hanford Thursday Night Marketplace promoting local services such as the Warm Line, two-one-one-nine-eight-eight Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, support groups, substance use disorder programs, and our new Care Act and Mobile Crisis Service twenty-two-four-seven Helpline. Pop-up resource booths at locations across Kings County include Kings County Commission on Aging in Armona, Stratford Library, Avonale Adult School, Kettleman City Family Resource Center, Lamoore Christian Aid, Corcoran Senior Center, the Hanford Mall, and the Hanford Civic Park. Mental health awareness banners will be displayed in downtown Hanford and Corcoran, as well as in front of the Human Services and Behavioral Health Building and on marquees in Avonale and NAS Lamoore, as well as Sierra Pacific High School, Hanford High School, and Hanford West High School. Next, Antonio Lopez will share information about our upcoming special events and school partnerships.
Morning, Antonio.
Good morning. So as mentioned, in addition to these community engagement activities, we're also going to be doing specific events regarding mental health. They are as followed, the Oak Wellness Center Community Walk and Mental Health Awareness Event, which will take place May twenty-first. The inaugural Kings County Behavioral Health Breaking the Stigma Conference, that's going to take place on May twenty-second. Bringing together professionals and advocates to address intersection between the substance, uh, use and the mental health. And we are also partnering with local schools and their sports teams, um, that want to volunteer to wear a wristband, um, for the students to wear throughout May, promoting mental health awareness. Uh, our team will also host, uh, different pop-ups and resource and awareness booths at schools to provide information and promotional items. Uh, next, Liliana Robles was, uh, talked to us a little bit about the broader impact and goals of these events.
Good morning.
Thank you, Antonio. Mental Health Awareness Month and Maternal Mental Health Month allow us to highlight the challenges faced by individuals and families in our community, promote available resources and support through Kings County Behavioral Health and our partners, encourage, encourage early intervention, prevention, and open dialogue about mental health, and advocate for expanded resources and support for maternal mental health. Our overarching goal is to foster a community where mental health is prioritized, stigma is reduced, and everyone has access to the support they need to thrive. Event flyers, mental health resources, and crisis contact information are available on the back table. You'll also find awareness items such as ribbons and pins. To help spread the message, please feel free to take what you need, what you need, and then share with others. And then to conclude, I'll turn it back over to Brenda.
Very good.
I did want to mention two other awareness activities that weren't listed on here. We'll be lighting up, um, the Civic Auditorium green for a week in May, and also, um, lighting up the sign, Corcoran, when you enter Corcoran, that'll be lit up green for the month. Just wanted to add that. Thank you, Lily. In closing, I respectfully urge the board to join communities nationwide in officially proclaiming May as Mental Health Awareness Month and Maternal Mental Health Month in Kings County. By doing so, we can advance a climate of hope, reduce stigma, and support the well-being of all residents. Um, I want to thank you for your leadership and commitment to mental health of Kings County residents.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
I just want to just, um, I know, sort of, you, you gave a bunch of dates of some, can, will that be sent out to, to?
We can make sure to send it out, yes.
That'd be great. Thanks.
You guys walk from the civic to the mall or the mall to the civic?
Um, the Oak Wellness Walk is usually, um, down Lacy, around, we walk down to the corner and back.
Okay.
It's not a, not a long walk.
Very good. And do we walk on our barbecue day too for this?
That's a smoking, that's a.
That's a health, that's a health one. Okay. Thank you.
You gonna walk that in?
I gotta cook. Thank, I know I gotta, I gotta eat.
Did you get a new job?
Any questions? Uh, any questions for the audience? Saying that, I'll bring it back for board for direction.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Moved by supervisor Nevs, second by supervisor Thayer, Madam Clerk, please call the roll, and we have a pitcher.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson? Robert Thayer?
Yes. Four in favor, one absent.
Thank you.
Yeah. You've got a transit. Yeah.
Cheryl, and would it be hard if I cut in front of you so I get the? Brad, the squeeze and. Big smiles, one, two, three, mental health.
Okay, at this time, we're going to go to item C, Human Service Agency, and we have Wendy. Good morning, Wendy. How are you doing?
Good, but I'm shorter. Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, Wendy Osikoffo, Director of Human Services. Today, we have four items before you related to one of our home key projects, the Sunrise Apartments. First, I want to just give a little bit of background and history for context. In late 2020, Kings County Human Services partnered with Kings-Tolary Homeless Ally, Alliance, KTHA, to apply, to apply for project home key funds. We were awarded $2.7 million, which was used to purchase the Stardust Hotel and the adjacent empty lot and complete the first phase of the remodel. The goal was to convert the Stardust Motel into 22-unit permanent housing, um, studio apartments, um, a site that would be for low-income households and would be called the Sunrise Apartments. The full conversion was to be completed by December 2025. In 2021 and 2022, we utilized the site as a non-congregate shelter during the COVID pandemic. It was known as Project Room Key at the time. By late 2022, we had secured the, uh, remainder of the funding needed to complete the second phase and second and final phase of the conversion. This project is a great example of collaboration and maximization of available resources. We were able to leverage and braid multiple resources from several different entities to achieve the shared goal. Um, just to illustrate that, in addition to the original $2.7 million home key grant, the additional funding came from a variety of sources. The city of Hanford contributed their CDBG funds, um, of about approximately $1.5 million. Kings-Tolary Homeless Alliance contributed their HAP funds of approximately $300,000. Our local health plans, Calviva and Blue Cross, or Anthem, contributed approximately $500,000. And then Kings County, we contributed our state allocations of HAP and PLHA, um, totaling approximately 1.1 million. So all these jurisdictions and entities came together to allow us to have the funding needed to complete the project. In total, the project cost $6.2 million, all grant funded, and that also includes a healthy operational reserve. In 2023 and 2024, um, really, the efforts were focused on the actual construction and remodeling of the rooms. This project would have been completed in 24, 2024, not for our nemesis, the switchgear, that suffered, um, more than a year's worth of supply chain, um, issues, and it, um, is a critical component to electrification. However, the switchgear did finally arrive this spring, and, um, we are now ready, uh, we are now officially electrified and ready to open in May. Even with the switchgear delay, which was significant, the project was completed six months ahead of time. As you recall, I mentioned the deadline was December 2025. So now I want to walk you through the items that you have before you today. Um, from the inception of the initial project proposal, the ongoing operations were intended to transition from KTHA to Kings Community Action Organization, KCAO. This is a low-income supportive permanent housing, so the property management, as well as the supportive services, will be provided by KCAO, who will link to behavioral health or human services as needed. The items that are before you today are the final steps in formalizing that transition. KTHA and KCAO have, um, closed escrow, and really, these agreements are the final, um, components that will fully transit, transition everything into, over into KCAO's responsibility. This is a complicated set of agenda items with a lot of history, so I'm going to try to explain these as simply as I can. The first item is an approval of the Assignment and Assumption Agreement and an amendment to the deed of trust. Several of the funding sources had requirements which included a city regulatory agreement, a city deed of trust, and a county regulatory agreement, a promissory note, and a deed of trust that was signed by the county and Stardust KTHA as the property owner. As part of the property transfer to KCAO, KCAO needs to assume those responsibilities and be reflected on those documents. So the first item is just shifting everything and adding KCAO. The second item is just simply amending the standard agreement with the state to include KCAO. This is the Third Amendment. On 11/10/2020, the board authorized the Human Service Director to sign and execute the standard agreements and all other home key program documents as required. The original agreement between HSA and KTHA was subsequently, subsequently signed by the former HSA Director on 12/15/2020. The First Amendment was signed by the former HSA Director on 11/30/2021 to amend a clerical error. The Second Amendment was signed on 10/27/2023 by myself to incorporate Stardust KTHA LLC as the property owner. In addition to KTHA, they set up a separate entity to own the, the property that had not been included in the original agreement. As this Third Amendment, as this Third Amendment is a significant change, adding a new party, and is interconnected with the other items before you today, I'm bringing it back to, to the board for formal approval. The third item is a resolution clarifying the intent of loan forgiveness related to the PLHA funds. As an HCD requirement, if funds are used for the development of affordable rental housing, PLHA assistance must be in the form of a low-interest deferred loan. However, it's permissible to forgive the loan after 55 years, if the project meets the terms and conditions for that entire time period. This grant was structured as a loan, um, as a requirement of the state. And when first brought before the board on January 30th, 2024, we shared that this was a requirement, um, and a means to recoup the investment should the project either not be completed, um, or the project fell out of compliance during the 55-year restrictive covenants. When KCAO reviewed these documents in preparation for the property transfer and today's items, they caught that the original agreement and promissory note included wording that reflected the deferment of the loan, but not, but did not include wording related to the forgiveness. The resolution before you today clarifies the county's intent to forgive the loan as long as KCAO stays in compliance with all the requirements being assumed for the next 55 years. It is significant, 55 years' hold we have over them, and a lot of us won't be here. So getting that in writing was obviously, uh, an important component. We will likely return at a future date to amend the PLHA agreement and promissory note to include the forgiveness terminology, just as a cleanup measure, um, so that everything's aligned and clear, uh, and matches with today's resolution. We work closely with County Council on this resolution, which establishes that loan forgiveness is permissible if it serves a legitimate public pers, purpose. As this project will provide 22 units of affordable permanent housing for 55 years to residents of Kings County, we believe that requirement has been met. The fourth item is a subordination agreement, which clarifies the priority of the involved parties in the property. As previously mentioned, the city of Hanford provided funding, and this places their agreement secondary to the county's home key regulatory agreement and 55-year restrictive covenants. The order is generally determined by amount of funding and is also a requirement of HCD. The city of Hanford is aware and has already signed the agreement. All of these items have been reviewed and approved by council as to form. They are needed to complete the ownership transfer of the Sunrise Apartments from Stardust KTHA LLC to KCAO, which will allow us to open the housing to residents in May. Today, we are seeking for the board to, A, approve the Assignment Assumption Agreement and Amendment of the Deed of Trust for Sunrise Apartments, Ownership Transfer to Kings Community Action Organization Incorporated, B, approve the Third Amendment to the Home Key Standard Agreement for the Sunrise Apartments project to incorporate Kings Community Action Organization Incorporated into the agreement, C, adopt a resolution finding PLHA loan forgiveness to be valid in substantial public purpose, D, approve the subordination agreement with Stardust KTHA LLC and the city of Hanford, requiring any provisions and obligations of the city development agreement are placed secondary to the provisions and obligations of the county regulatory agreement and covenant associated with Home Key Standard Agreement 20-HK, HK-0031. Thank you for your patience. That was a mouthful. Um, as I shared all of that, I'm available for questions as are staff from KCAO and council. And with that, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Wendy. I know that this has been a long time coming. It was a controversial vote. It was a 3-2 vote. We did it back in 2020.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you inherited this project, uh, and I want to thank you for your hard work and diligence to get it done. It's been frustrating, um, and I've always said we need to stand in front of something to show people what we can do, and this is the first one.
Yes.
Four years, almost four years, so.
Yes.
Uh, thank you for your, your work, a little over four years, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, any questions from the board? Any comments from the board? Robert? I just, just, you know, thank you. I'm sure it's probably like a marathon or two that you ran. I remember us talking about this way back.
Yeah.
In the day, and I know it's a long time. I actually think Chris has at least one gray hair from, um, the continual updates about switchgear and, you know, and the lessons of what a pandemic will do to your, your path forward. But that's, you know, just congratulations. And I see Jeff back there, KCAO, great organization that's going to take this forward. And just thank you. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Rusty? Congratulations, Wendy. You, you deserve it. This is, this is a big win. And, uh, you, you also were helpful to us. You know, anytime we had questions, you'd take us over. I, I, you're like a teacher. You had your chalkboard and you're going over all this with us. So, uh, it's, it's a step in the right direction, and Jeff, you're a good steward. So good luck.
Yeah, so this isn't in your job description, so you went above and beyond. So thank you.
I didn't, I've learned more about construction than I've ever wanted to know in my entire life.
And you're not done, so.
And we, and we have a whole other project to talk about, but we're not doing that today. We're not doing that right now. I'll take the good feedback for today.
Uh, directions from the board?
Who will present it, Mr. Chair?
Moved by supervisor Nevs, second by supervisor Robinson. Uh, any questions from the audience? I tell you, Rebecca Bell has her hand up.
Morning, Rebecca.
I have a question. Now, was it supposed to be that the members of, or the tenants that were in one establishment went to the second one, and the third, and the second ones went to Triangle? And then the triangle was in North Star, or is any of that tied in?
So, Mr. Chair, would you like the staff member to respond to the question?
You'd like to respond to it? I mean, it's a, it's a good question.
Yeah. Okay, cool.
So there's a, a little bit of confusion because some of the sites were used for multiple purposes. So this, um, as I mentioned in my, um, presentation, when we purchased this hotel, we knew it'd take a few years to raise the money. And so during the pandemic, it was used to shelter individual, a non-congregate shelter for individuals that were exposed at risk of COVID. Um, those individuals weren't automatically moving into any of these, any of the permanent housing. Some of them may, some of them may, um, once it was completed, but years would go. So we were able to move many people into other permanent housing options in the meantime. All entries into this project, once it's completed, need to go through our coordinated care. They'll go through Kings-Tolary Homeless Alignment, Alliance. It's based on priority. There's a waitlist. Um, they need to be, you know, document ready and, and meet the eligibility criteria. So it was, um, I think perception, because a lot of people qualified with the, it'd be easy to just grab these people and move them in. But it wasn't actually set up that way. And then with the time it would take to complete it, you know, individuals have changed over time.
Because I understand that those ones were transitional housing, and then they had to be in the program in order to qualify for North Star, that they had to be in the system. I mean, that's what was said, that they had to be in the system because they weren't having anybody just, lo and behold, uh, let me just go in there. But they said that you had to be in the system before you can go over to North Star, because that's permanent housing. So transition, and then once you've proven yourself in transitional, you follow the rules and made your payments and whatnot, then you can go into permanent. And from permanent, you're going into your own one where you have a mortgage. Is that how it works?
So before, before we start, Mr. Chair, you want that, you want Wendy to continue responding to the questions?
Why don't you guys get together and, and ask your questions? I mean, we, we've been working on this for five years, almost, almost five years, and we've been discussing it for a long time. So if you have any further questions, I take it up with, uh, Jeff Gardner, once he gets it in his control, and we can move forward on this today.
Right.
And we're going to have a, we're going to have ribbon cutting out there on Friday.
Yes.
At 11 o'clock, and then you're welcome to go to that as well, and, uh, we can answer questions out there at the same time.
Yeah, I was waiting for the vote, and then I was going to announce the ribbon cutting.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson? Robert Thayer?
Yes.
All in favor, one absent. Wendy?
Thank you all. I appreciate your support. Um, before I stop, I did want to announce the Sunrise Ribbon Cutting is this Friday, 11:00 AM. Um, I, most of you have received formal invitations. We hope you can join us. We're really excited about this event. And then, you know, even more excited about transitioning people into, into housing next month. Thank you all.
We'll go back a little bit, uh, you know, we started this. You know, we get blamed for a lot of these projects and not talking to the community. And so this was during COVID, and we did a team meeting, or I don't know if it was team, whatever. We did a meeting with the community and answered all their questions. And I want to thank the community because they participated in that, and they were okay with it, so they didn't fight us on it. So that's the hardest thing to do, is get buy-in from the community that's going to be in the area. And, uh, you know, without their support, we can't do this because we're always on defense. And uh, you know, without their support, we can't do this because we're always on defense all the time. So
That's right.
I want to make sure the communities uh, were very much appreciative of their support.
And I've, you know, just um, individual community members reaching out. I also, um, you know, former supervisor, um, Fagundes um, shared outreach he's had. I mean, there was initial concern. Um, the perception has shifted and um, seeing the improvement of the site. Um, they feel like it's a, it's a value add to the community and, and, and where previously there were some concern. And so it's, I think the outreach was helpful. I think the success of the project and now seeing it in operation will, will build some credibility there.
Yeah, it's a nice facility. So I think as time goes on, the city of Hanford has a plan to do a four lane with an island in the middle on East Boulevard from Tenth Avenue out to Costco. I think it, and then we take that in consideration and design part of it. Sue by the Nevs brought up a good idea. We bought the property next door for additional parking for the future. So uh, that, that's beneficial. So you know, once we're not fighting with the community, we're able to talk about and get all these ideas out on the table and get buy-in. So uh, just thank you for everybody that participated in this. I'm glad to have it done. I don't know why it took so long, other than that the government was involved.
Yeah, it's probably the main thing.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
When you said credibility, that's such an important stamp. I know when we did Holiday Lodge, that Bridge Creek key project that, that, that this now, you know, the county has brought forth, you know, at least these two neighboring that, that really anybody that ever wants to have a negative connotation about any of this can go down there and see for themselves that this is not an unchecked stuff it full of people and see you later and, and you know, Crime Central is running about, you know, it, it just is not that way. And, and, and it just shows the um, the investment from this board. I know the city of Hanford and others and just again, credibility is a big thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good job. Okay, we'll move on to the next item. And we're gonna go to item D in this library. We have Vicky Cervantes. Morning, Vicky.
Hello. Good morning, Chair.
Chairman, members of the board. Vicky Cervantes, Library Director. I'm here before you today to talk about a little bit of the background. So you'll understand what, why we're here to ask what we're asking for. Boy, this sounds so amplified. I'm in October twenty twenty two, the state, the California State Library granted a, a total award of thirteen point six million dollars for critical maintenance for the Hanford branch and the Lamar branch to provide upgrades um, for HVAC, uh, plumbing, uh, suppression system, security. And so we're really looking forward to getting those projects launched very soon. I'm here before you today, though, to talk about a temporary library location that we've worked on um, in our pursuit uh, that started in February to find a suitable location to, to erect a temporary library that would provide amenities that the city, citizens of Hanford and Kings County um, at large would, would be able to visit and fulfill their lifelong learning goals and dreams. So we have identified that property um, at one ten South Eleventh Avenue here in Hanford. It's a large space. It's fifteen thousand square, square feet. Um, the lease agreement at hand does cover um, a fifty cents per square foot, um, which brings our rent to seven thousand five hundred. In addition, because this is a commercial location, there are other um, additional fees for community area maintenance and triple net fees that total three thousand nine hundred ninety five dollars. Our total monthly rent will be eleven thousand four hundred and ninety five. We'd like the lease agreement to start, I believe tomorrow's May first already. I can't believe it. Um, May first, um, according to the property owner, that's not a problem. And the lease would go until May first, twenty twenty six at that fifty, fifty cents per square foot. Should our project be delayed or need more time, which we're pretty sure it is going to need more time, um, the lease agreement would move to seventy cents per square foot. I'm still definitely a very good use of space for this, for the community at large, um, and our library patrons. We are seeking to use our library contingency funds to cover the cost um, for the annual cost for twelve months is a hundred and thirty seven thousand nine hundred in rent payments for this move. Um, the space will also serve as a library headquarters for not only Hanford and surrounding areas, but also for the city of Lamar. Um, the city of Lamar library will be totally shut down. Both library branches will be totally shut down for about twelve months. Um, possibly fifteen months uh, to get our projects concluded. Uh, let's see. If I'm here before you today to hopefully for our recommendation for you to approve the lease agreement with Pretam S. Grewal and Majit K. Grewal for the temporary library location of the Ham, Hamford and Lamar Branch Libraries effective May first through May first, twenty twenty six. And item B, adopt the budget change. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Vicky. Any questions from the board or comments? I know, I know this has been a long time coming. My question would be, uh, are you ready for the remodel? Do you have everybody working? You got public work?
Yes, public works. There, we're coming through in a couple of weeks. Um, because you're on hiatus next week for barbecue. Um, we're coming through with an item to, to go out to bid. So we are getting very closer. We are ahead of some other jurisdictions in the, the Central Valley. So we, we, we are ahead in like where we're at in the status of things. So we feel really good about it. The team um, from admin down has been tremendous, tremendous help in moving the project as quickly forward as we can. So as you mentioned before, in the other item, sometimes things take time.
What's your plan of attack? You gonna shut that library down for a week to move?
Yes.
And then uh, that's a lot of work.
That is a lot of work. We, we have um, some sole source contractors that would do that for us. Uh, that exclusively work with libraries and moving materials and furniture. No, no, we're, no, by no means are we gonna put, you know, sixty thousand items over there. We'll probably put half that because we'll want to grow the collection with new materials, uh, physical, physical materials. But for us, we're not just physical materials, we're people spaces. So that's also very important. Technology access and people space and programs is very important to us.
Only ask I would have, and I think Joe might agree with me on it, is now that you're moving the the more library and the Hanford library to a new location, maybe talk to Angie Dow at heart and make sure that the services are accessible to the ridership that may or may not use that. And we have like an Uber style, they can, they can go, or maybe she'll add in a route if we have people. I don't, I don't know. I don't know who uses your library.
We, I'm not a, you know. Well, in Lamar, it's a lot of young families in Lamar. So we're, we're, we are, we do plan to have a hybrid library um, stop, like a little pop-up here and there with community partners. And, and for our most out-risk um, clients or the um, the elderly who don't drive anymore, we also might do a curbside drop-off. We're, we're gonna brainstorm those particular elements for Lamar. And then of course, take a, take our PR out to their city council and let them know that we're not abandoning um, any library users in that area.
In the summer reading program.
Oh, yes.
Formal, it'd just be a different location. And though. No comments or questions. I'll go for directions from the board. Sue by Sue by the Robinson, second by Sue by the Nevs. Uh, anybody in the audience, any comment? Question? Oh, yeah, Rebecca Bell. Come on up, come on down.
I'm so sorry.
You gotta show your library card.
I'm so sorry with so many questions, but um, is this temporary location uh, handicap accessible like wheelchair accessible?
Yes.
So do you want staff to answer that question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Well, that would be on the, um, on the property owner, right, to have it accessible. So yes, it is, it's commercial space. So all the ADA requirements that, that are held, held to the landlord are, are held to the landlord. And so certainly our, our business practice model is to have accessibility uh, overall as well. So.
All required. Any other questions? Ding man, Madam Berkeley, fellow role.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson, Robert Thayer.
Yes.
All in favor, one absent. I want to thank staff for getting this done. It wasn't easy. Uh, we don't have a lot of big spaces available. And so we were able to find, find one. So I want to thank administration for negotiating this and getting it done. So uh, move on now to Public Works Department and look like we have Mitchell. Morning, Mitchell.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, Mitchell Cabrera, Chief Engineer with the Public Works Department. Before your board this morning with the three-part request. Uh, but before I begin the request, I wanted to point out a correction um, that needs to be made uh, in regards to the naming convention. Uh, the agenda item, resolution and draft ordinance uh, have it labeled as phase eight and nine of the zone benefit. Phase eight and nine. Uh, this is due to confusion. Uh, eight and nine is the naming convention for the developer of the Armona um, Summers Point subdivision. Um, it should be uh, track nine, three, six, phase one and two uh, for the county uh, recording documents. So anywhere we see um, eight and nine, it should just be track nine, three, six uh, phase one and two. Uh, so the request, uh, the first part of the request is to adopt the resolution of intent to form the zone of benefit for track nine, three, six, phase one and two of the Summers Point subdivision and the unincorporated community of Armona. Uh, this would allow a tax to be imposed um, on the properties to bring in money for a future road maintenance uh, borne by the county. Uh, the second part of the request is also to set a public hearing for June third of this year at ten AM to hear testimony regarding the formation of zone of benefit or any comments uh, concerns about uh, that formation. And the final request is the introduction and waiving the first reading of the ordinance that would impose the tax for road improvements and maintenance within zone of benefit, track nine, three, six, phase one and two. Uh, so the zone of benefit um, method we've used on the previous phases. Um, phase four dash two of track seven fifty six was the first, the first phase, which the county implemented the zone of benefit. Prior to that, um, developers had tried to use the homeowners association, uh, but that didn't really work out. Um, so we're proposing and the developer has uh, agreed based off of the agreement that was presented before your board, September twenty sixth of twenty twenty three. Uh, the developer has signed his waiver and agreed to move forward with the zone of benefit and impose that tax on the future lots. Um, the amount as shown in the ordinance would be two hundred and seventy per parcel. And there's around a hundred and nine lots. Uh, so that money would be collected. And then at year seven, fourteen and twenty one, uh, road maintenance would be done uh, in that area of that new subdivision. Uh, so we request that you um, first adopt the resolution of intent. Second, set the hearing for June third at ten AM. And finally, introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance for the zone of benefit. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mitchell. Any question or comments from the board?
Yeah. By Robinson.
Thank you, Mitchell. Uh, just, so yes, you use this zone of benefit uh, in uh, in this phase of this target.
Yes.
Can you use it elsewhere?
Uh, so as far as development wise, this would be the main one. Um, the Jackson Ranch did a similar, but they were a building district. Um, they still did the same subdivision improvement agreement, uh, but their zone of benefit was a little different. Um, just the fact that we don't have that much developments going on in the county, um, like subdivisions. Um, Armona's pretty much been the main central point for the zone of benefits.
Is this an approach for like unincorporated areas?
Uh, this is a way where uh, the county and the developer come to an agreement uh, for future road maintenance. Without the zone of benefit in place, um, the homeowners would either have to create a homeowners association and take upon the maintenance and repairs um, through that group. Or otherwise, the county is left to bear all responsibility and maintenance costs. Um, the, the way Armona has worked is the county accepts the new roads um, into the road network, but not into the maintained mileage. Uh, so this allows the county to recuperate that cost and provide um, road maintenance preventative measures. So typically it's uh, slurry seals at year seven and fourteen. And year twenty one would be the uh, bigger road repair, an overlay if needed.
And the two seventy, is that a yearly fee?
Yes, it's an annual tax.
You have a question?
I just, I just had one question. Is the zone of benefit, does that also include like exterior landscape?
This zone of benefit in particular would also include um, storm drain and a, a park that was a requirement um, as one of the conditions for approval uh, for this phase. Uh, but typically the previous ones have just been strictly road.
Jackson, I don't remember if the subdivision has you know, like we have here in City of Hanford, you know, eleventh avenue is curbed with plants and stuff, right? And.
Uh, these typically don't. This is just a sidewalk, curb gutter and the road, but this one does include that park and basin and park.
Thank you.
Directions from the board? Move the chair, Lou by Sue by the Nevs, second by Sue by Robinson. Uh, any questions from the audience? Rebecca Bell?
Okay, the zoning benefits, does that mean that developers come into towns and pass on the what, and the towns that there are passing, that they are developing, are they passing the responsibilities to the cities to maintain their property? While they're collecting on money from the mortgage company? I mean, how? Can you explain to me the whole purpose of this? Because I don't know if this is by saying the zoning benefits is passing on the buck to the cities that the developers, if they're passing on the expenses to the cities that they are developing in.
So Mitchell, you want to answer that?
Uh, yeah, I can.
Are you gonna do it here or you want to do it later? Okay, you're okay with that? Okay, I'll get back to you. Thank you. Okay, if there's no more questions, we'll go for a vote. Madam Burke?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson, Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, sir. Very good. Moving on now to administration and we'll choose that. Karen?
That's actually going to be Sarah Poots.
Morning, Sarah. How are you?
Hey, good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Sarah Poots, Risk Manager for the Administration Department. The Health Insurance Advisory Committee consists of voting representatives from each bargaining unit and represented, unrepresented management. The committee votes on items such as the health insurance plan proposals that are then recommended to your board for approval. Committee members met with our health insurance brokers, the Baldwin Group on April fifteenth to review renewal proposals for the health insurance plan premiums for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. There were three proposals made and our committee voted to recommend the proposal with the most favorable decrease in cost to both employees and the county. The decrease in premiums is a direct result of high utilization in the twenty four, twenty five fiscal year. This high utilization, while not ideal, allowed the stop-loss reinsurance policy to reimburse more than one point three million dollars back to the county within the most recent twelve months. These reimbursement amounts are deposited back into the health insurance fund. The total cost of the health plan for twenty five, twenty six fiscal year is impacted by the large stop-loss reimbursement, resulting in three point nine seven reduction in premiums for the health plan. I do want to thank the committee members for their time and contributions. They bring alternative options to the table, provide valuable feedback from employees and ask challenging questions to ensure we're exploring all options to make the best possible plan for employees and their families. I would also like to acknowledge the hard work that the Baldwin Group does to rise to the challenges presented by the committee. The recommended proposal for the health insurance plan results in the employee contribution decreasing by approximately one hundred and ninety four thousand, seven hundred and eighty five dollars and the county share decreasing by approximately five hundred and ninety seven thousand, five hundred and thirty seven dollars. This decrease will be factored into the final budget for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. At this time, we respectfully ask for your board to approve the health insurance renewal rate for the fiscal year twenty five, twenty six with a three point nine seven decrease and the continuation of the wellness blood draw for eligible employees and dependents that currently include a fifty dollar incentive. I have Leroy Tucker and Ashley Owana here from the Baldwin Group here to help answer any questions you may have. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions from the board? How about the Tucker group? You guys have anything you want to add to it?
You have anything you want to say?
I always could, would like to say more, but I just want to thank the county. Pleasure to work with. Your insurance committee is just stellar. They do a great job. They take it very seriously and almost personally. And of all the counties and cities that we represent, we just, they're one of our favorites just because they do a great job. And uh, you're a self-insured plan. You manage it very well. And you know, it's nice to talk about almost four percent rate reduction to your plan when everything else in the industry is going up considerably. I mean, Blue Shield in their large group pool business has a standing twelve point nine percent increase that they've had for the last several years. And your rate's going down four percent roughly. So it's just, I compliment you. It's a pleasure working with you. And uh, we just enjoy it. I also want to thank Sarah. She does a great job leading the committee. And uh, just, so it's, it's a real pleasure. So we thank you very much. If you have any questions about the plan, we're happy to ask, answer any specific questions.
No, thank you for the comments. Any questions from the board? I appreciate that. I appreciate the good, the good words too. And uh, Sarah, give our uh, thanks to the committee for doing a good job. And anytime you get a reduction is awesome. I think last year we had an increase, right?
Yes, we did. I'm much happier to be.
Yes, we did. I'm much happier to be presenting today than last year.
But we hadn't had an increase in years and we had an increase and it hurt. And so now we have a reduction. So I think we increased last year three point three percent.
It was thirteen point three five, I believe. And this is the first time that anyone can remember that we've actually had a decrease, so.
So do you think, can you contribute it to maybe the blood draw that we're finding things before they find us?
We did actually have an increase in participation with the blood draw. I want to say. Um, last year we had six hundred and nine and prior to that we had four hundred and eighty-four the year prior, so. Uh, I think that's over a hundred and twenty-five. Forgive me, I can't do math on the spot, but. We, we had a big increase last year with the, the blood draw, but you know, that's confidential information, so I definitely wouldn't know whether it is, you know.
I would advise any, any member of the county, please, you know, take the fifty dollars, give your blood. And they can see if you're going the right direction with your lifestyle.
Absolutely. Yeah, I second that.
Okay. Uh, what's the pleasure of the board? So move it, yeah, second. Moved by uh supervisor there, second by supervisor nerves. Do we have anybody from the audience? Rebecca, are you good? All right. That would be to call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson, Robert Thayer.
Yes.
People, people, we have to thank you.
Thank you.
Please pass on our good words to your.
I, I will do. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the next item. It looks like we have Giselle. Good morning, Giselle.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Giselle Clay, Administrative Analyst, Kings County Administration. Before you this morning is an update to the Kings County Employee Recognition Programs Policy. The current policy approved back in nineteen eighty-eight has been effective over the years, and this is the update brought forward. To better strengthen the county's employee recognition initiatives with the implementation of the Employee of the Year Award. Incorporating the Employee of the Year Award is part of our broader effort to ensure that our employee recognition programs. Are not only consistent, but also aligned with the values we hold as a county. This addition will significantly enhance employee morale by offering more structured recognition for those who exemplify excellence. By acknowledging one outstanding employee each year, we're encouraging a culture where high performance and teamwork are celebrated and valued. The recognition itself will consist of two components. Employee of the Quarter Award will remain as is, including a three hundred dollar cash prize, which has already been funded out of the general fund. And the new Employee of the Year Award will consist of a commemorative plaque and forty hours, the equivalent of one week of paid vacation. The vacation leave will be held in a separate accrual bank and will have no cash value, requiring it to be used within twelve months. These awards are designed to be meaningful yet fiscally responsible, and we believe they will contribute significantly to the overall engagement and retention of our county employees. The fiscal impact of these revisions are minimal. The Employee of the Quarter Award remains unchanged with its funding already allocated in the general fund. The Employee of the Year Award only adds a small expense of fifty dollars for the plaque and the paid leave. The first Employee of the Year announcement will take place during our employee recognition barbecue on May sixth, twenty twenty-five. The formal recognition will follow at the Board of Supervisors meeting on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. This timeline gives us the opportunity to celebrate our first recipient in a public way, highlighting their achievements and the value they bring to our county. In conclusion, this update to the Employee Recognition Programs Policy is an important step. In furthering our commitment to recognizing and celebrating the hard work of and dedication of our employees. At this time, we respectfully ask your board to approve the proposed revisions to the policy, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board or comments? Motion by supervisor Robinson, second by supervisor there, uh any questions from the audience? I think. Okay, Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson, Robert Thayer.
Yes.
People, people, one action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to the announcement on uh next Tuesday. Okay, we'll move on to the next item and uh. Item three, administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Curie Martinez, C E O. So pursuant to California Penal Code, the county is required to respond to findings and recommendations outlined by the grand jury's report titled. Kings County O E S. As a legislative body, we are submitting this letter as the official county response. The response to grand jury report has been prepared for the board's consideration. On March fourteenth, the county received a copy of the report, which requires a formal response. In order to meet the legal deadline, the board must issue response within ninety days or by May fifteenth, so we allowed ourselves another additional board. Meeting should the board have any changes today. Attached is the board's review and the approval proposed letter prepared by staff. So I'll go through, there was a fine for findings and I'll highlight them. Finding number one was emergency declaration issued by a single supervisor. The grand jury's recommendation was to designate someone other than the single supervisor to declare emergency. The board's response is the current process allows for swift action when the board is not in session with the full board ratification within seven days of, and. Under government code, uh to further strengthen the government's counter administration will also explore the designation of another appropriate official. As part of the emergency operations plan update, but it remains the same for now. Additional, additionally, the county ordinance number three sixty-one will be revised to align with current structure of the O E S. And the fire chief job specification has been updated formally include the O E S oversight. Find number two is recommendation to place O E S under the sheriff's office or establish a standalone department. Grand jury recommendation is to temporarily place O E S under sheriff's department with the eventual goal of establishing a standalone department. Board response is due to fiscal constraints and space limitations, establishing a standalone O E S department is currently not a priority. As a rural county, Kings County must consolidate services to manage limited resources of the thirty-five rural counties in California. Only one county has a standalone O E S department. O E S will continue to operate under the fire department and arrangement has proven effective on for emergency coordination and operational efficiencies. Find number three was the um. Lack of timely professional training. Grand jury recommendation was to conduct a full-scale emergency training exercise, including the board supervising before September first. The county agrees that the nation and has initiated the update to the emergency operation plan through a competitive procurement process. And is scheduled to be completed by September of twenty twenty-five. A full-scale training exercise involving county departments, cities and board will occur following the receipt of the uh updated draft. Plan. Additional efforts include local O E S training certification for staff and the launch of online disaster preparedness courses to ensure broader and faster staff participation. Will be also explored. Find number four is an outdated emergency operations plan. Uh, the recommendation is to update the Kings County Emergency Operation Plan by September first. County agrees, the E O P update is underway with the contractor selected. A draft plan is expected um by late April twenty, by this month and adoption targeted before September first. This effort is a high priority initiative to ensure the county's emergency response framework remains compliant with state and standards and best practices. Admin values the thoughtful review provided by the grand jury and remains committed to strengthening the county's emergency management frame. Uh workforce, the board will also specifically. And county administration recognized and expresses disappreciation for the Kings County Fire Department and O E S. Division, their dedication, professionalism and ongoing efforts are vital to protecting the community, ensuring and coordinating effective response to emergencies. That concludes my report.
Mr. Chair, if I could also add, our office advised that the item before you is an appropriate response, and we've advised against individual employees providing.
Any comments from the board? Action from the board. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Moved by supervisor nerves. Second by supervisor there. I do not do the audience.
You, you still can. But yeah, you should go to the audience.
Do you have any, any questions from the audience? Okay, you're good? Okay. And then uh. Employees, no?
He can speak as a member of the public, yes.
Morning.
Good morning. Abraham Valencia, um Kings County resident, uh so I can't speak as O E S.
You can also speak as O E S, but we've advised against individual employees providing response on behalf of the board.
Right, yeah, that's not my purpose here. So as the O E S manager. Um, I really appreciate these conversations that are going around. Um, oh yes, that's, that's excellent. Um, as you all know, the federal government is considering cutting FEMA. And uh hiring the thresholds for public assistance in the case of emergencies. So right now is a good time to start preparing locally in case that burden falls on us, in case there's an emergency. And as we all saw, not to be cliche, but when we had the floods, i- it's not a matter of if, but it's a matter of when. So it's good that we're talking about this and prioritizing emergency management. I, I respect the board. I respect the position of the board and. Um, I just want to urge the board to continue having O E S in the forefront in their minds to make it a priority, make emergency. Management a priority because um. We are public safety. Yes, we're not out in the field, but we're behind the scenes. We're credentialed, we're certificated. Um, we're educated in emergency management and we do a lot of heavy lifting behind the scenes, and so um we appreciate the board's attention. Um, I want to give you an example of, of how O E S is, is vital to the county. When Corcoran was at risk of flooding a couple of years ago. The entire city, I'm talking the entire city, the prisons. Um, there was some emergency repairs that needed to get done on the Corcoran levee and there, there was obviously funding that was necessary. That wasn't a political ask, just a political ask. There was FEMA requirements behind that. Um, and one of those requirements was that the county had an updated hazard mitigation plan. Well, even before the floods, your Kings County O E S team was working on updating that plan. With urgency because we knew it was uh outdated. And because we were already at a head start, um we were able to um together with everybody else's efforts, um secure funding for that Corcoran levee. So again, I appreciate the attention O E S is getting and I can, I um um appreciate the conversation that are happening around it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Anybody online? Okay, I'll take it back to the clerk for the, for call.
Apologize. Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson, Robert Thayer.
Yes.
People, people, one action. Next item, Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Alex Schu Walker, Administrator of Alex Kings County Administration. Before you this morning is a letter of support for Assembly Bill twelve eighteen. Which will make it a crime to unlawfully possess copper materials without lawful ownership, proof of lawful ownership. According to the Kings County Sheriff's Office and the Kings County District Attorney's Office. Kings County experiences on average four to ten copper wire thefts per week. In the last four years, Kings County experienced three hundred and sixty reported incidents of copper wire theft. Amounting to two point six five million dollars in damages, including cost to repair and replace stolen copper wire. The damage value does not include the loss of agricultural cop crops. And the damage caused by unreported copper wire thefts. Copper wire is one of the most frequent crime crimes experienced in Kings County agricultural community. A single copper wire theft can cause damages between five thousand and one hundred thousand dollars. In Kings County, frequent targets include agricultural wells. Pumps and telecommunications, telecommunications infrastructure. Under existing law, section four eighty-seven J of the California Penal Code governs copper material theft. A B twelve eighteen will make it a crime to unlawfully possess copper wire materials without proof of lawful ownership. Additionally, the proposed bill would also prohibit a person from falsifying any record intending to show proof of lawful possession. Before the board is a letter that supports A B twelve eighteen. If your board chooses to pass this. Agenda item, the county state lobbyists will support the county in sharing the letter. The California State Sheriff's Association sponsors and supports A B twelve eighteen. At this time, we respectfully request your board to authorize the chairman to sign a letter of support in favor of A B twelve eighteen. Relating to copper material theft. I understand that Sheriff Robinson may have a few roles to share as well, but I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Sheriff, so you're.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dave Robinson, Kings County Sheriff. Uh, just to add a little bit of context to it, um as of yesterday. Other support letters, Hanson Ranches, J G Boswell Corporation, Gilkey Five. Prairie Gas Bar Dairy, Netto Ag, Ri- Reed and Ranch. Cloverdale Farms, Slim Block Grower Solutions, Hogard Ranch, West Haven Agribusiness, E G Farming. Rottaberry Ranches, Stanislaus County Farm Bureau, Kings County Farm Bureau. And Monterey County Farm Bureau have all submitted letters of support to the author. Um, an update I got last night that this is going to be made a two-year bill today. Um, it was on the agenda um in the Public Safety Committee this morning. The author working with the chair of that Public Safety Committee, um rather than bring it to a vote, which they um. Preliminary didn't have enough votes to get it out of committee. Um, so they're going to make it a two-year bill and work with us moving forward to try to get this uh law passed. Um, the, the hang up or hiccup that the um party in control doesn't like is that. Uh, law already exists as possession of stolen property. And um the, this is different because you have to show proof of ownership for nine hundred and fifty dollar. Or more in value. And that's, that's the struggle that we have, law enforcement has in the state of California. Is wire is wire is wire. The same wire being used at all these ranches I just mentioned. Looks exactly the same. So if you do not catch them in the act. It's hard to prove where it came from. And so what this bill is going to do is put the onus on the possessor. To show that they prove, that they prove that they possess it lawfully. Seems pretty simple. You go to Home Depot, you buy a roll of. Roll a wire, you have a receipt, they have you on camera, you have a credit card receipt, you have something that we can go prove that. Um, but unfortunately, in the climate in California. Um, it's not enough. Uh, we tried to loop in utility companies this year and E V charging stations because. Quite frankly, they're getting hit hard as well. Um, that wasn't quite enough. We tried to get this through last year. Um, with just the farming community and that wasn't enough. So we're still at the table. Um, we do have a bill number and I absolutely appreciate this board support, even though. It is going to be a two-year bill and I'll be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Thank you. A- as a farmer and also a commercial property owner, I've been robbed multiple times when it comes to copper. They not only take the copper wire, they take the copper breakers. They pull the breakers out of your, out of your breaker box. And you have to, you know, and, and things change, so you can't get a replacement breaker because now the models change. You get about a whole new breaker. Now you're talking. What should have cost fifteen hundred, cost fifteen thousand. And so I've had it happen multiple times. I know uh a girl of mine. He had a well running, they went up and hooked onto the wires with a pickup, took off thirteen hundred feet of rewired copper wire. So. That was thirty-five thousand dollars three or four years ago. Uh, we replaced it with aluminum wire. But that doesn't mean there's more than that, no difference. So my guy had been putting not copper on the box, so he wants to take it. And one gentleman took uh. He took about a quarter mile of copper wire and lost the tailgate with life pin. I don't think it gonna happen if he said he wasn't driving the truck.
Correct.
This is where, just like what I said earlier about the, the phone. Uh, you know, the phone companies do the same thing. We got people out there taking phone lines. If it's my phone line, uh. Maybe Bay Bar Shopping Center, that's a federal thing, you take the phone. If you got a question.
Correct. Can I just add to it, uh, Mr. Chair? Um, recently Fresno County uh passed an ordinance basically mirroring the state law. Um, I know the Fresno, the city of Fresno was concerning it as well. Um, your board does have that option. We worked with county council on this legislation last year to kind of get it where it was. Um, county council was of the opinion that an ordinance is not lawful at this point for various reasons, but Fresno County has done it. Um, the Fresno County District Attorney has come out publicly and said she's not sure that it's lawful and she's going to be submitting a request. To the Attorney General's Office for an opinion on whether or not she is able to prosecute those cases under the new ordinance. So it is an option for your board to consider, you know. Either just acknowledging that Fresno County has done this and, and trail to see what the attorney general opinion comes back as. I. I, I have a guess on what that's going to say. Um, and, and so, you know, but your board can absolutely take action if you see fit to pass a local ordinance. And we can take the chance to see what our district attorney opines on it and, and move forward from there. Um, but. The agenda item before you today is simply just the, the support letter, which we will continue to push. Um, at our level and, and try to get some traction. You know, it's a, it's a frustrating experience when you pull over a vehicle and. There's thousands of pounds of copper and you can't prove where it came from. And, and so therefore. You know, it's stolen material that, that just keeps getting stolen, but then if you seize the material, the crooks just go out and do it again. You know, so crime and punishment, um Prop thirty-six will help in that aspect, but so far we.
It's important. Right now, they're trying to fight it.
Yeah, correct. And right now, we just don't have the support from the governor. Um, to move forward with funding for Prop thirty-six. So there's multiple challenges going on in the state of California at the moment.
Yes, and the copper wire has a value to it, but you gotta add the labor in there too as well and the time. So say you're. Say you have a lift pump, you gotta, you gotta balance either wire going to your lift pump and canal. You order wire twenty-four hours in advance, they come, you anchor wires, go a night, now you've blocked all your water that you've been pumping out of the canal, so that goes away. Uh, and you have to offset it with your groundwater, which hurts as well. So there's a lot of variables in here. It'd be nice to have the state support us on this, but right now we're going to go for a vote on this one and hopefully get some traction.
Thank you.
By Robinson. Yeah, I just, I just want to get long first to keep it. Motion. Thank you by supervisor Robinson. Second question, there. Any questions from the audience? Good?
Okay.
The only thing, Mr. Chair, and I think Sheriff, uh, if you get a chance.
The only thing, Mr. Chair, and I think Sheriff, if you get a chance, you know, there's a lot of James fire hydrants also in the company. They're stealing the caps off of them.
The whole, but they're copper, they're brass, they're all brass.
Brass, yeah.
Correct.
It's all kind of. No, Crippen used to only ID when I was taking even aluminum.
Yeah.
I think there is a mechanism in place, but it just needs to be sure that with this kind of type of relationship.
Yeah, supervisor, that's a great comment. You know, there is a mechanism, the metal recyclers do, under the law, they are required to check I D, document who, who brought it in. If it's, if it's not somebody who has a contractor's license, they're required to issue a check to that person versus cash. If you're a contractor and you're recycling and you're on their, their books as a contractor with the contractor's license, you can actually get cash as you walk out the door. But it's like everything else in California, there's always a workaround. And so this is just to kind of tie that in a little bit and, and that's a great point on the fire hydrants. Cause if you drive around the fire hydrants now, hardly any have a cap on them anymore. Yeah. So, which draws into the public safety issue, you know, that, that we're so worried about, even with P Saps and, you know, Sacramento Airport went down last year because of somebody digging up lines. So, you know, it's a big problem in the state, we just got to draw more attention to it, so this will help do that.
Well, the fire hydrant, if you see them, if they're inside the curb, they belong to the owner of the property, not a city-owned deal. I have five Titans and I had accident, they took one, got knocked off. And luckily, the tow truck driver says, I gotta save the fire hydrant for some of them still. So he took it back to the shop and I would pick it up. Getting invited to it, so.
Yeah.
We active, they will come still invited.
You know, and a nice suggestion from today's meeting would be with your support, a press release, you know, acknowledging your guys' support of this bill to draw more attention to it publicly as well. Thank you.
Okay, we have motion second, no more questions, so we'll call, we'll call.
Joe Neves?
Yes.
Doug Ribbey?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson? Robert Thayer?
Yes, more favorable when absent. This time we'll move on now to no more denied items, right? The board member announced, then of course, supervisor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, please, the last meeting stage, Friday. C SAC conference, California State. Also supervisor, we don't have a assembly one, Al Lucido and Senator Miller for the town. I'm actually very water, raising my. I gave some, I have our funding. The daddy, the fridge repair. Last night I spoke with the Main Street Angels there in downtown half of the future. Back east. First question. Go to Valadeo.
You, right there.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ditto, echo a lot of what supervisor Robinson said last Tuesday after this meeting. I headed up Sacramento for, for my first C SAC legislative conference. I attended many Cal State Sheriff's legislative conferences and, and not, not in Cal State Sheriff's, but it just pales in comparison to, to the event that C SAC put on. And I was, I was extremely impressed with the networking opportunities and the, the new relationships that really I think each of us have and darned and we're up there that, that a lot of the community doesn't realize that, that we pulled those resources and even backed into this county. An example on, one of the days I was back there, they all kind of started blending together. Met with Secretary Ross and Secretary Profoot along with Matt Boyett was there along with our team, a lot from our county internal team on this S two J two is a, about this, this job investment, infrastructure coming into a four county region. It was, it was very helpful to be part, at least again, be, be at the table. It's better to be at the table and walk away from it than to not have been invited. But my point with that is the next day, met with Madera County Supervisor, we all who's representing Madera County and, and just those relationships that we've met, you know, that, that kicks, kicks off this new relationship on, on what's really best for our counties and how about, and about, how about achieving that? You know, this, this thing in, in governing is, it's, it's a long game, it doesn't happen overnight. And but again, that whole process up in Sacramento was very much worth the time. The last day I was up there was Thursday, we met with thirty county region. And, and things in our county region are moving forward, but then I'll, I'll just end with this. You know, new to the board of supervisors, there's, there's a significant number of roads that, that, that traverse our county lines and, you know, and the county line was right down the center road. And, and, you know, one side of the road is Clary County issues and one side of the road is our issues. But I, I just throw kudos out to our public works and specifically, I know it's our new road superintendent, Rafaela Rosca, that I've had a handful of issues from constituents about roads along that county boundary. And just thankfully, these all are Clary County's obligations. Then again, you know, the relationships with, with these other supervisors and then ask for help from them and, and our, our, at least current two issues are, are on their agenda to get fixed. So I just throw that out to Rafael and his crew and then just thank him publicly for, for his quickness on, on at least getting something put on the schedule. That's, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Let me know. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Kathy and I attended the power of the first was, which was honoring Administrative Professionals Day at the Hampton Civic on the twenty-third. Great food, wonderful speaker, some amazing packages for some lucky winners. Unfortunately, we just didn't have any in this office, but certainly glad to have everyone there. The Kings County Association of Governments also met on the twenty-third with the Transportation Development Act funds being reviewed, the first hearing on unmet transit needs. That remains open and will close in May. The low carbon transit operations program was also reviewed and approved along with the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six overall work plan and budget. Kathy and I had on Friday attended the Kings County Fire Personnel Pinning, Badge Pinning Ceremony. Four new firefighters had gone through training and, and graduated and now working in the field. So I want to thank Matt, and they've already left. Continue to announce softball at Lemoore High. Attended the Echoes of Courage event in downtown Hanford on Saturday. It was a parade and some wonderful speakers about the Vietnam War and the fiftieth anniversary of the ending of the Vietnam War. And then just too bad it was raining. Everything else was great. Monday, yesterday, the Community Breakfast held at Tatchy Pathless benefited the Bridge to College Program. It mentors high school students that attend California universities by arranging for visits and applying for funding and trying to get some of those high school students into colleges and universities in California. I got to attend the Kings County Behavioral Health Advisory Board meeting yesterday and got a preview of some of the stuff that we talked about today. They'll also be talking about bylaw revision and if you recall, we did that not too long ago, but a couple of things that popped up might be to, to address that in the future. Kings River is also flowing for the two thousand twenty-five year. Storage in Pine Flat stands at seventy-six percent and there's approximately twenty-two thousand, twenty-two hundred second feet being released at the dam. There's still three to five, three to forty-five hundred cubic feet per second flowing into the dam. So water safety, safety is going to be an extremely important for the next year or four months. Fresno County's already had a drowning up at Winton Park. So just be aware that the water that's coming down the canyon river is extremely cold. And even a strong swimmer in good physical health will run into challenges when you get into that water that not a week before was ice. So that water is going to be extremely cold for most of the spring and probably later on. With that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, nothing left to add, I was there at C SAC as well, there's a big turn couple of items and did a lot of networking. So turn over now to period of my view for, for.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I do have quite a few items for board correspondence, the board received correspondence on April twenty-first from Kathleen Miller encouraging the board to urge state legislators to vote no on bills such as A B four seventy. The board received correspondence April twenty-third from Stacy Jones regarding maintenance and upkeep of the memorial tank at the Hanford Cemetery. The board received a monthly fund balance report from the treasurer and treasurer report of cash investments for March twenty twenty-five from the Department of Finance. Board received the Office of Emergency Services Kings County Operational Area Date Report dated April twenty-fifth. The board received correspondence from the Board of State Community Corrections dated March nineteenth regarding the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four follow-up inspections of the Corcoran Police Department Technology Holding Facility. The board received an invitation from Ren Reef Sunset Unified School District to their forty-fourth annual Milton O'Willen Award Ceremony, which will be held on Tuesday, May twentieth. The board received an invitation from the Building Industry Association of Tulare in Kings County to attend their public official mixer. On May fifteen, twenty twenty-five, the board received public notice from Western Waste Management April, dated April twenty-fourth regarding permit modification that went effect on March sixteen. For upcoming events, Kings County will host its employee appreciation barbecue next Tuesday from eleven thirty to one thirty on our Government Center. Kings County will host its blood drive in memory of Fire Captain Mark Eads on May fifteenth from nine A M to one P M. Walk-ups are welcome, you can register online for upcoming agenda items. The following agenda items are for May thirteenth, May sixth is, board meeting is canceled. Administration has two items, an amendment agreement with the healthcare services, Department of Healthcare Services for Services and Sober Graduation Resolution. Item regarding the county survey and road commissioner roles and employee of the year. Act Commission has one item authorized the Act Commission to sign an agreement with California Proper Improvement Association. Behavioral Health has two items, an amendment agreement to the healthcare services agreements and sober graduation resolution. C D A has one item regarding the month, monthly reporting, especially of reporting of the planning commission actions. Fire has two items, I just need to slow down my report, I think that's what my issue is, I'm trying to read it too fast. Fire has two items, acceptance of an extreme heat and community resilience program grant and introduction of the fire prevention and protection ordinance. Health has six items, the flu-free incentive programs, fourth amendment to the WIC program, purchase of some items, memorandum of understanding with Medicare managed care plan and first amendment software agreement. H C S three items in agreement with K C A O for some child care resource and referral services, M O U with Kings County Behavioral Health and foster care month proclamation. Lastly, Public Works has three items, maintain mileage, Kettleman City Infrastructure Project and the Twenty-Second Avenue, Bringsville Boulevard Roundabout Project. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. This time we'll move on to the session, okay, that one, like.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation to cases. Initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of section five four nine five six point nine of the government code, deciding whether to initiate litigation, government code section five four nine five six point ninety-four. The next item, conference with labor negotiators, government code section five four nine five seven point six. Negotiators, Kiri Martinez, Carolyn Lee, Jay Johnson, and Lou Berk, Caspi Whitmore. General unit, Lucia Supervisors Unit, Lucia Blue Collar, S E I U. Detentions, Deputies Association, Firefighters Association, Deputy Sheriff's Association, Probation Officers Association, Prosecutors Association and Unrepresented Management. I'll turn it back over to the chair for any public comments.
Thank you, any public comment at all? Being then, we will adjourn and go to our California Public Finance Authority meeting at eleven A M. Thank you.